And Jeannie, of course.
Anita said she was coming, so.
Right.
Yeah.
She gets in late often.
Did you receive all the emails, the flurry of emails I sent?
I did, um.
And Jeannie, of course.
And I haven't. She was coming, so.
I haven't gotten to look at a lot of those attachments, because I just saw them.
Yeah, they just, I just sent them out, so it's not necessarily for discussion tonight.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, we're live on YouTube right now, Ethan.
Yeah, I realize that. We're just waiting on Anita.
I'm gonna message her. Alright, I just sent her a message.
Jeremy should have gone to the retirement party.
I should have?
Best barbecue ever.
Really?
Yep.
Oh.
Who's retiring?
Rick Seibel from the Department of Public Works and then another fellow who's leaving for health reasons from Public Works.
Jeannie, you said you were gonna bring some back. Did you bring some smoke?
Nope.
No?
You, no. You're not here tomorrow.
You're right, I'm not there tomorrow. You're right. Did you bring yourself, did you bring your, did you guys bring some home for dinner tonight? Here's Anita. Ethan, you want me to pull up the, share my screen and I can pull up the agenda? Anita, are you with us? There you are. Alright, Ethan, I just, yep. Ethan, I shared my screen, and so I brought up your latest loose agenda for tonight.
Got it. Did everybody have a chance at least to look at that part? Anita, I sent a flurry of emails and I don't expect you reviewed everything. But I just, I wanted to, this is sort of a loose agenda for how I wanted to talk tonight to start the discussion. Obviously, we have three of us, which is a quorum. We're not gonna be doing any voting. But this is a public hearing of the Camden Planning Board, June 16, 2022, with a focus on short-term rentals. So I think the best thing we could do is sort of, knowing what we know about the rest of the group, and the work that we've done to date. Pat, your summary was a really good summary. Thank you for that. Talk through some of these issues, and, you know, again, nothing to vote on right now, but what we hope is that when they, when they have a chance, that Crissow and Andy and Mark will have a chance to watch the video, and then we can sort of proceed from the understanding that everybody's at least been part of the discussion to some degree. So from this loose agenda, first thing I was going to do is check in with Jeremy and Jeannie about the timing. Essentially, we need to go backwards, right, from how soon, what day we have to have this to the Select Board in order to get it on the warrant. So Jeremy, if you could just address that so that we have kind of a drop dead date to get things done. I think the worst thing that we could do right now is get bogged down in details and not get something on the ballot.
Alright, maybe first, non-agenda items, Ethan, before that?
Any non-agenda items?
I've got nothing from anyone out there. I guess one non-agenda item would be the vote that took place the other day. You know, all the zoning ordinance amendments passed overwhelmingly.
Well, the one was closer than the rest, right? Was that the lot size one?
Yeah, one was, you're right. It's true. But overall, they did pass, so I think, I think that's a good thing. Whether or not we'll see anything out of it, I don't know. I will say on top of that, the legislature did pass the, their Affordable Housing Coalition. There's a bill that was in the legislature last year. It's been around for a while, many, many months. It got tabled, and then they created a commission that looked at it. They did water it down a bit, but they did pass it. And so that is now, you know, the law of the land in Maine. And so we are gonna have to at some point, it's for implementation, it must be, I think, adopted by, I think, July of next year, I think, is what it is. So we're gonna have to look at tweaking some of our ordinance amendments for next June, again, on the housing piece. We'll see if there's any litigation that comes out of that. It'll be interesting to see what happens if a municipality does not adopt these things. And then where is that community and how does that play out? But.
Jeremy, do you want to, for those listening to us, would you like to just do a really brief summary of what that's about at the state level?
I mean, very, very brief summary. I really wasn't prepared to go into it. However, there was, again, a bill that was in the legislature that to address affordable housing and housing availability and increasing housing stock. And the legislature, for the most part, went beyond home rule, to be honest with you. They went beyond that and are mandating that municipalities implement certain housing, I would say amendments to their zoning ordinances as they have them. And for the most part, you, single family, anything that's zoned, single families, you're gonna be able to, have to be able to allow them to have four units, as I understand. It's quite, it's quite, it's, it takes Ethan's word. I mean, I think it's a little draconian. However, however, it, you know, the legislature did pass it. There was, the MMA was involved. They tried to, you know, convey the message that municipalities, in tradition in Maine, in Maine laws, municipalities handle zoning issues. And this kind of supersedes that, however. We'll see. I mean, I don't think it does much. One of the issues that came up was, you know, can, why don't you guys address the short-term rental piece? And they did add a provision that says it allows municipalities to address short-term rentals. That is something that we already know that we can do. So wasn't much at all, but we'll see. I guess I can get a summary to folks in the next month or so on what that, what that new legislative.
Right, and I'm sure we can all find it, but if you want to circulate the final text of the bill, that would be helpful.
Will do.
Any other non-agenda items that anybody wants to bring up?
Jeremy, just one other question, back to that workforce or affordable housing bill. That's something, if I just went out there and Googled it, that's something I would easily find for the.
Probably. I mean, it was kind of very, you know, there's a lot of, it was very contentious, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
And so I do think, I do think you can find it pretty readily. I can probably get something to you in the next day or so, Pat.
Jeremy, did that pass? Did you say that passed?
Oh, yeah.
Well, then, is there any reason you, since it's going to apply to us anyway, is there any reason you wouldn't want to put it on your section of the town website?
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't want to do that at this point, Anita.
As a link?
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessarily needed. I think it would create, could possibly create confusion for people. I mean, if someone came into the office today and tried to permit something that is allowed under the, you know, that housing bill, and is not allowed under our current zoning ordinance, I would deny it and I wouldn't allow it to move forward. They could then appeal it. So I think, to be honest, I think it would be creating a lot of confusion to do something like that at this point. I think just getting information to you folks first, and then we can plot our course from there.
Yeah.
I have another, I do have a non-agenda question. I was wondering whether it would be appropriate for the planning board to advocate, since we're advocating for affordable housing and advocating for improving the possibilities for housing in our town, is, would it be appropriate for the planning board to advocate for the Select Board to put on their list of priorities to move forward with making plans for Sagamore Parish?
I don't think it's really in our position to direct the Select Board. It kind of goes the opposite way. So, yeah, I would say no. You know, I think as a citizen, you certainly are welcome to reach out to the Select Board members and urge them that way. I'm pretty sure that they are, you know, they have given us, you know, some direction that they want us to look at short-term rentals. And they've also indicated, just based on their comments to our recent zoning ordinances that we did send to them. And they also have indicated, you know, that workforce and affordable housing are key issues for them as well. So I'm pretty sure it's on their radar, but as a citizen, feel free to reach out to them. I don't think as a planning board, it's really our place to direct them or ask them to look at anything other than what we're bringing forward to them, and that's what we're doing now. So I do want to move on from non-agenda items unless there's something else, because we have a fair amount to talk about.
Alright, timing. Yeah, getting on the November ballot is always a, really, you know, it happens very quickly. We almost need to be working on things, you know, well, in like almost a year, two years, to be honest with you, ahead of time. Just because of the time can be so challenging. So in order to get something on the ballot in November, I think I'm gonna step down to your agenda item number five for a second, item D, which is zoning ordinance versus police power ordinance. Because the process there is, would change the timing to get on the ballot, to be honest with you. Because, you know, police power ordinance, which is what we currently are using with our unhosed and short-term rental registration ordinance, that's under police powers, and that does not go through, that's like similar to licensing of lodging establishments, like a hotel, a motel, or even breakfast. And also vitzlers, which are eating establishments. Those all come under police powers. So we have the ability to do that, and I'm glad it's on the discussion here, because we could, if we amend it, amend our current ordinance that we have and address some of these very issues that you're talking about via that mechanism, the process is different. You don't have to have public hearings with the planning board. Those, that public hearing is with the Select Board. So you really shrink the time, because if it's a zoning ordinance, it goes to the planning board. You have to develop the ordinance, and we create it, and we have workshops and public hearings on it. And then you come up with a recommendation and send it to the Select Board. They then have to hold a public hearing themselves. So there's multiple hearings involved when you go that route. And so if we go the route of the zoning ordinance, Jeannie, and this is not set in stone by any stretch of the imagination, because this comes from the town clerk. And what the town clerk has to look at is, you know, she looks at the date of the election in November, and what it takes to produce ballots for mail-in, and, you know, those types of ballots, you know, they have to be accessible. And that's quite a process to do that, and that's why it takes so long, and that's why I have to start. The deadline for Katrina, I think, is like two months before the election, that the language has to be done and through all the hearings and all the process. So if we're gonna do it as a zoning ordinance, we're looking at, and this is preliminary, because we had an election this week, and so Katrina was really focused on doing that, and Jeannie did not want to, you know, interrupt that whole process. So what we're thinking right now is July 21st would be like the last date that we could have our language, like nailed-down language, would be July 21st of a zoning ordinance amendment. And that would be for a public hearing on August 4th. And that would get us to, hopefully, to the place where then it could get to the Select Board for, you know, for inclusion on the ballot in November. They would hold a hearing and then they would, they would move.
Okay.
Kind of where we are right now, Ethan. I think you could shave a month off of that if it was just as unhosed and short-term rental registration ordinance tweak under police powers, if you will. And I will say, you can, I think a fair amount of the things that need to be addressed or that are people's concerns could probably be addressed in that, in a tweaked police power ordinance as opposed to a zoning ordinance. So you can include some of the same stuff. So either way, that's where we are. I think that's, so, I mean, we're already at June 16th. So July 21, I mean, that's a month away. That's like two meetings.
I got later than that, Jeremy. I got August 16.
Oh, okay. I was basing this on the email from last week, Jeannie. August 4th is what I read, sorry. So either way, Ethan, we're like August 4th or August 16th?
August 16th for final language and then a hearing after that, Jeannie?
Well, August 16th is the Select Board meeting, and you have to have the language ready by then, which means that the 4th is the normal planning board meeting before that. You could also go to the 11th, I think. But the 16th is the day you have to have it to the Select Board, the language.
Gotcha.
And that would be through our hearing process and our notice.
Right, and so Jeremy's other dates are pretty much on point there.
Yeah.
We might be a little bit more wiggle room. Okay, that does add to the, sort of the urgency and also the consideration of the police power versus the the zoning ordinance. You know, the zoning ordinance argument, we can start with this first, because we sort of did jump there, since it is related to the timing. I think it's only mandatory that it be a zoning ordinance if we're talking about regulating different zones differently. That's sort of my take on it. And if we're not, then I think Jeremy's right, that we can approach all of this other stuff just based on using the police power. So, you know, this is a good, a good point of discussion. I don't know if you all have any questions. Jeremy, I do have a question. Is Bill Kelly still gonna be our attorney? Is he still the town attorney?
He's still the town attorney, and I think he gets re.
I think he's up for reappointment at this next meeting. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So we need to, we're gonna need to involve him fairly quickly also. Because we are gonna need review. If you saw my email from Maine Municipal Association, we can pretty reasonably expect somebody might want to legally challenge this ordinance at some point. And so it's going to require a careful review by the town city attorney before we send it on to the Select Board. So that's another element of the scheduling. Go ahead, Anita.
I, so you're thinking about, you're looking at the high-level debate between zoning ordinance and police powers. What I wanted to mention, this might be appropriate to this particular discussion or decision. I had a chance to talk with the code enforcement officer in Cape Elizabeth, and we were looking at Cape Elizabeth's short-term rental rules as being, you know, close to what we're interested in. Thank you, Pat, for doing such a great job summarizing it. It was great to be able to have that information at my fingertips. When I spoke with the code enforcement officer, he was probably a little bit surprised when I brought up some facts from it that, showing some familiarity with their rules. In any case, what I wanted to mention is, it was a brief discussion, but he did say that you need, he needs, as a code enforcement officer, 10 to 15 hours a week to police these rules during the high season.
Okay.
So there is a very definite, as I expected, a very definite staff time involvement when these rules come into effect. And that would be, need to go into your calculator when you're thinking about how to, how to handle this.
Okay, and Jeremy, you want to respond?
Sure. No, I think, Anita, that's very appropriate, and I, you know, I think the intention, from my perspective and the town manager's perspective, is, and I think the Select Board, at least the current Select Board until coming up, is that I think most of the Select Board feel that, and I know I do, and I think the town manager does, is that, you know, you need to pay for service, to be honest with you. You know, if you want to do a project on your house, taxpayers shouldn't pay for the activities that the code enforcement office needs to do to make sure, and we permit it right, and we get all the inspections right. It should be reliant on fees. And our hope is that with, I think, I don't know if I shared, I think I shared it with you, Granicus did a report for us. I think there are, one of the reports I saw was 300 and some odd short-term rentals. And these are unique short-term rentals. And if you're looking at a fee for each one of those, that is in the ballpark of, on average, what most communities across the country are charging for short-term rental registrations, is in the ballpark of $200 to $300 a year, or for, you know, for a license or an inspection or registration. And the intention would be for us to use some of those funds to hire a firm, and they're out there to manage and monitor and administer and enforce it for, help us with the enforcement piece. And that, this is what, this is what most municipalities are doing, rather than saddling their existing staff with more work, because you're right, it will be 15 hours a week. But all of these firms, and we've talked about them before, they have proprietary, you know, computer applications that are able to scrub all of the online, you know, platforms, and they're able to determine who's registered, who's not, and they can assist you in registering, and they can assist you with monitoring. So that's the intention, I think, from my perspective. That's what I've talked to the Select Board about and the town manager about in the past. Because if you're talking 300 rentals times, say, $300, that's a significant dollar amount that could cover the cost and would cover the cost, plus some for monitoring and assisting the municipality enforcement. They actually would either even send out letters on our letterhead as part of that, as notices. So that's, I think, where we'd go, Anita. So I wouldn't worry too much about the additional costs to our office, because there's ways to do it that won't saddle us with more work.
I think that's, just real quick, I'm gonna respond. Anita, thanks for bringing that up, and thanks for checking in with the folks down in Cape Elizabeth. I really appreciate that effort. That is helpful information to have, what kind of burden it could put on. And Jeremy, thanks for your reply to that. We definitely want to make sure, I think, the upshot from all of that is that whatever we set for any kind of a fee will cover the cost of the enforcement, regardless of whether it's an external firm or in-house. That's the way I look at it. You know, if we're hiring a part-time person to do this alone, or if we have to, whatever it is we have to do, I think it's just important that we keep that in mind. Now, Pat, you had your hand up several times.
Yeah, so are we thinking about going the route of adding on to the police ordinance to?
That's.
We're at least discussing it. We're at least discussing it. Do you have any thoughts on that?
We're looking at it that way versus creating our own ordinances, because like you mentioned, if the zone isn't gonna change, then is there really a need for a zoning ordinance versus a police ordinance? Is how I was kind of understanding you, Ethan. And also, it sounds like there's a timing concern if we want to get something out in the November ballot. That's the other major piece, basically.
Those are the two pieces, absolutely. So the difference, though, is.
But there's also a third, I believe, and that's if you have to take somebody to court. If they're gonna get fined, there's a difference in the way that it would be done through the zoning ordinance and through the police ordinance, I believe. One is very cumbersome, and the other one is a simple violation the police would pursue. I think that might.
Yeah, that's all written in. That would all be written into the ordinance. The enforcement piece would be written into the short-term police power ordinance.
But is Jeannie correct, Jeremy, that it's easier essentially for the police to, the police to enforce some of the police ordinance in the court rather than the zoning ordinance? Are you aware of that distinction?
You know, to be honest with you, I think it would probably take the same amount of time. It may be less paperwork on the municipality's end to process it and do it. But I think certainly you can tweak penalties and things like that to, you know, however you'd like. So, I mean, this is all information I can get from the town attorney, and, you know, I'll be meeting with him on Monday and making sure.
Yeah, so let's get, let's get some feedback on that, Jeremy, and specifically what I want to get to from the, from the police power side of things, is focusing on, like, so I want to first address with the members of the board present that if we go that route, that means we are giving up the right to, of our own, to hold a formal public hearing on the actual ordinance, because we would craft it and we would send it right on to the Select Board. So we would, we would, we would be forfeiting that right or that responsibility, whichever way you look at it. But doesn't mean we can't have workshops and have the public hear, but people are more likely to show up when they say, okay, here's the final language, you know, formal public hearing, than just workshopping ideas. So that's something we need to think about, and maybe when we get together as a full board, we should talk about which way we want to go. I'm sort of, you know, I am anxious to get this on the ballot, but I also am cautious about, you know, rushing anything. And so if it turns out that we're actually aiming for next June, you know, maybe that's what we're doing. You know, it may be better to slow our pace than to rush. If we, if we think that, you know, just based on the fact that, like, we haven't been able to get enough members here. You know, I really want, I really want and feel like we need Crissow's input. He's a, you know, sitting member on the board, and Mark is not here, but he's also vacating his seat. And then you have Andy as a, as a, maybe a reluctant alternate. I'm not sure. I'm hopeful he's more than that. But we want to make sure that he's going to be able to be engaged, and so we need to think about those issues. So I don't want to, I don't want to rush at the expense of doing the best job we can. Go ahead, Anita.
I just wanted to mention another element that's interesting to compare. I mentioned the 10 to 15 hours a week to police in Cape Elizabeth. They only have 25 to 30 people who are renting out as short-term rentals, which is a significant difference to what, Jeremy, you're saying that we have here, which is 100?
Oh, no, we're in the 200 to 300.
But that, Anita, that is likely, right, but that is likely due to the fact that they prohibit unhosed and short-term rental, flat out. And so there aren't that many people in Camden who are inviting people into their homes. I promise you. There are people who have second homes or extra, you know, vacant buildings or whatever, that they are renting out. And that's, that's what we're trying to address, really, right? That's the core of what we're trying. By the way, your hand is eternally up, Anita, and I think that's.
I, I.
But.
It was up because I did want to ask that question.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I was just letting you know.
Oops, wait a minute. Now I'm clapping.
So I think that is largely because they don't allow any unhosed and short-term rentals. And I would be, it is a little surprising to me then, given that number that you provided, that they literally, you're telling me that they're spending a half an hour a week on each rental? Like, I would be surprised that that was the case.
This is, listen, I spoke to the code enforcement officer, who is the person responsible for policing this.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
And, you know, I actually kind of questioned him on it, and I said, well, I guess you're the code enforcement officer. You'd know. He said, yes. So I think that's important to look at. And I, I did hear you, Jeremy, last, this last workshop where you said that the fees would cover the oversight. And what I was thinking of at that time is that's gonna be very helpful in, you know, sort of scrubbing the Airbnb ads and the homestay ads, and, you know, try sitting there afar and looking at, you know, who's advertising and where, and who's doing it that shouldn't be doing it. That all makes sense, but there's definitely an on-the-ground component, I believe, which means that in addition to your company that would be working online, trying to help us enforce it, I believe that this would be difficult to enforce without a staff person. And I just wanted to give you that sort of amount of time it requires. I'm not, I'm not trying to dissuade this. I'm just trying to put this into the discussion so we can.
No, and I think that's absolutely, I think you're right. I think they probably also use one of these companies to search and scrub. And that he's saying that in addition to that, he's also. search and scrub. And that he's saying that in addition to that, he's also doing dealing, you know. So we don't, we asked you to go get information from the horse's mouth and you've delivered it. We won't kill the messenger. Um, but but I I do think that there's a little bit of a um, of an inflation perhaps of of the amount of time that he's putting in. If they if they are not using a scrubbing company, then I would believe that that's probably your more act, you know, maybe more accurate. So maybe they have not hired one of those firms. Um, and that's that's highly possible.
When I look at some of the um rules and regulations that that these various towns that Pat put together require, they're requiring, you know, inspections every three to five years. That's for every single one of these rentals. Um, they're requiring that initial inspection in order to get the um, the certification or the license. Uh, there's just, and then, of course, if there are complaints, then somebody needs to trot out there. It's not going to be the person that's um working out a California office or whatever.
Right, right. And I I hear you on that part of it. There's certainly an on-the-ground component. That's what I was acknowledging.
So I'm just, I'm just, um, yeah, I'm just, I I I believe that the license fees would cover all this. It just, it's gonna be hard to get a handle on how much to charge. I guess that's the bottom line.
Yeah, well, I think I think a lot of this
What we need to pay for.
Yeah, I think a lot of that, to be honest, my perspective on that is in penalties. And and if somebody violates the ordinance, the first, you know, the first strike is a significant monetary penalty. And the second strike is you no longer get to rent. You know, and I think that's kind of like the the heavy, the heavy behind the whole thing so that you almost um, force compliance with the with the the potential for penalties. Um, and and that that is part of it, I think. Go ahead, Pat.
So these third parties that you're potentially talking about hiring, they would um be having somebody come into our area also to do actually the the groundwork, the footwork of
No, no, this is all, this is all just scraping and identifying, really. I mean, and that's Anita's point, really, that there's always going to be an on-the-ground component. And so to underestimate that, I think, is at our peril. I think she's right. Um, that that thi- this company can take a huge portion of the burden of identifying and and, you know, helping us make sure that everybody's registered. As he said, they'll even send the letters out and all those things. Say, you are operating an Airbnb in Town Camden. By the Town of Camden's ordinance, you are required to register with the town and provide X, Y, and Z. You know, proof of insurance, proof of, you know, this, that, and the other thing. And proof of home set exemption if we're going that route, whatever it is, you know, all those things. And then, you know, so they can do that stuff for us. And that is an administrative portion of it, really. But as far as the actual fielding complaints, uh, if they're if we're requiring physical inspections, if um, you know, those sorts of things, those are going to be boots-on-the-ground people um having to do those jobs.
If it's a police ordinance, then would it be a police staff person? If it's a, if it's a zoning ordinance, then would it be a code enforcement officer? Uh, staff person? And is there a difference in the cost of salaries of those two different sorts of employees?
Well, certainly there's a cause, there's a difference in salaries, but the um, and benefits. Um, in the police ordinance, um, it's, we are able to write in who the enforcement authority is. So I believe the short-term rental orders, registration ordinance currently says um, the police chief and or the code enforcement officer, I think, is what it says. So yeah, we can just write that into the ordinance who enforces it.
All right. So I'm gonna um, without reaching any kind of absolute de- determination on this issue, I want to get to some of the substance of the other things that are on the agenda. Um, but thank you so much. Go ahead, Pat.
Sorry, Ethan, just one other thing. I thought I had read about if you're registering, trying to register your rental through Airbnb. I know that um Kennebunk, for example, something pops up about licensing being needed if you're trying to establish a rental that way in an air via Airbnb. And I thought it was if Airbnb knows that you guys have gone to ordinances and do require licensing, that Airbnb will enforce a field, let's say, in the um submission that has a place for that you need to put in a license.
Yeah, that is my understanding, too. Yeah.
So that, I think, is an an additional help for us because they're not going to be able to register on Airbnb unless they get some type of
Right. And if it, and if that's adopted also by, say, VRBO, because there is more than just Airbnb, but I hear you, that that would be extremely helpful. And um would eliminate a bunch of listings that um are not properly registered. Um, but there is that question what we get to, which is, and that that will get us to um number four on our list at some point. Um, but do we require registration of all licensing of all Airbnbs? Or are we requiring only of a certain portion of them based on type? And that's a question we'll get to. But that is a good question. Um, so I do want to get back, start with um the the number two, we've sort of addressed number one, the timing, uh urgent to maybe just aiming for next June. We'll see how that goes. Um, but we'll get more clarification on that. Um, and then, so number two is the purpose. And and Pat did a great job summarizing those on her notes. If you have those in front of you. Um, I'm gonna pull them up myself.
You want to share those, Ethan, if you'd like? You don't have to if everyone's
I don't, I'm actually on my computer and my phone. I use my phone, so I can't really share it.
All right.
But if you can.
We gotta find the document.
I sent it in the one of the last two emails.
Okay.
I believe. And she calls them goals. It's it's a, basically it lists safety and insurance is number
Is it Pat, Pat's short-term rental notes?
Yep.
Yeah.
Did this come in today?
Are you, can you, are you see, do you see the screen?
Yeah.
Uh, not yet. It still show, it still shows my loose agenda.
All right, hold on.
That came in
Yes, it was sent, it was sent to, I I I sent it just uh about half an hour before the meeting, Anita, your email.
So I I'm sorry, I didn't see my emails just then.
No, I know. I I mentioned before that there was a flurry of emails and maybe didn't get addressed, but uh Jeremy's posting it here on the screen. It looks like it says goals. It's right there. You got it. Goals, which, you know, for purposes of drafting an ordinance, we're gonna actually uh call that purpose, right? The purpose is sort of an official portion of the ordinance. And it's where you, it's where you lay the foundation for the work that you're doing. Um, and uh, absolutely, uh, Pat, you nailed, I think, all of the things that we were um, you know, pretty much our goals were um the safety and insurance is certainly something that we're concerned about. Um, are are these properties up to code? Do they carry the the requisite insurance um for the property? And I think that's a, that's a big eye-opener for a lot of people that are renting right now. I would guess that they are not aware that their homeowner's policy is not covering these short-term rentals. Now, Airbnb does provide their own insurance. And so whether, you know, whether there's some sort of a, you know,
Umbrella.
Umbrella under that, you know, is something to discuss. Um, Pat's number two is uh ensure that neighborhoods are not overly impacted by short-term rentals. And, you know, there's a couple of different impacts that we can talk about. Um, there's uh, you know, that sort of the just the transient nature, there's traffic. There's uh, you know, I don't think we've had a big problem parking. I don't think we've had a big problem in this in Camden, but the potential, you know, for loud parties or ra- raucous groups, you know. I haven't seen or heard a lot about that. I don't think we've had much issue with that. Um, and then just the overall character of the neighborhood going from essentially a residential neighborhood to a more commercial. I mean, let's be frank, this is a commercial activity in some of these properties. And so um, that certainly is one of our primary goals. And then, of course, um, Pat was, I'm really glad you put this in here, Pat. Um, the idea that the select board did ask specifically about the proposed changes that we made to the ordinances um, where we provided for more density and alternative or or duplicate housing or more units. Um, and concern that those properties that are produced or built or converted under those that or those ordinances that we passed not be done just for the sake of pure profit into the short-term rental market, but rather to actually contribute to the housing stock available to long-term residents. Um, and that's a really important aspect of it. And that does tie into number four, which is making sure we have more housing available in general. I'm I'm going to steer clear of affordable housing because there's no guarantee that anything that we do gets put into the affordable housing. And thank you, Jeannie, for your discussion with me on that. Um, but the, I I like the term um workforce housing. Because people in town work and they make a very, a wide uh range of salaries. But we hear all the time how teachers, police officers, firemen, you know, servers at restaurants, you know, all of these different, you know, all of these different uh jobs can't afford to live in town um in 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 within the town line. And and people, you hear stories of, and I I I think I got this from a select board meeting. Um, you know, we had someone come in and say, I own this restaurant. And and people are talking about renting a place forty-five minutes away just to come into to work here. I mean, and that's, that's really a tragedy if 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 if, you know, it's one thing if you can live, you know, fifteen minutes out of town, but forty-five minutes is like, you know, it's just too much. So we can't fix the housing problem by short-term rental ordinance alone. But as Pat indicated from her notes above, and and how Vicky Dutera had put it, was every house you put back on the market helps to some degree. And 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 so we really are, we we did our thing with the 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 zoning amendments that we, the changes that we made, that were passed. And now we're doing another part with the short-term rentals. And and that I do agree with Pat is really um the primary goal um, for for this, for this ordinance that we're crafting. And I wanted to get, I I see that Pat has said that already on this document. I agree with that. Anita, do you see that the same way? You're muted.
As um, the four goals being the primary reasons for our undertaking this, is that we used
Well, they're they're all, they're, they're all the main reasons. They all are part of our purpose. I think we agree with that. Pat was suggesting that the primary is actually number four, which is sort of, which is tied into number three, the housing stock issue.
Yeah, um, I agree with these. And but I I wonder if you wouldn't mind clarifying number three. Um
Okay, so
Because of the way it's phrased, select board concerns is as a goal, um, not
Yeah, well, it's it, like I said, it really does tie into number four. But at the select board meeting when when Jeremy presented the ordinance amendments, the select board said, what's to stop somebody from turning a a single-family home into three units and then Airbnb being out two additional units they just created? That was basically the the summary of the question. And so the question was, are we building, are we changing the ordinance to allow for increased housing stock and then allowing someone to immediately take that stock out of the long-term housing market? Does that make sense? And so that really does, it really does tie into, it really does tie into number four. But it did come directly from the select board. So I think they're they're very related. Go ahead, Pat.
Um, so question on that, we've we did these changes. It seemed like in a lot of cases, we removed maybe twenty-five hundred square feet that's needed. Um, or you can put a duplex on the same size lot as a single-family home now. But um, you know, when I look around town right now, are there a lot of these events going on where people are converting a house over into a duplex or a mall or a three-family or something and putting a certain amount into Airbnb?
Just Jeremy, go ahead. I mean, this ordinance did just pass, so
Yeah, I, you know, I I've had conversations with people that had issues with the ordinance amendments that we proposed and that were passed. And they, you know, they said there's going to be this flood of changes in in town. I think people forget that, you know, I think people think that the village district is single-family. It's not single-family. If you look at what was allowed before, we just changed the lot size requirement. So I just, I, we have not seen people coming in to the office to convert single-family to two-family on lots that already allowed them prior. Um, they're just not doing it. But what we are seeing is people, I'm I'm, to be honest, from away that have bought up houses and are renovating them. Um, and they're adding accessory structures or garages, you know, we allow those accessories. And I know we have this provision that says primary residency. Um, but they're doing that. They're they're converting and they're buying houses and renovating them. Lots of them are not living here. Um, and they're they're second homes. And I hear all the time that they're doing it to short-term rental. Um, I do hear that. Um, right now, we have no ability to say, okay, this one is gonna be a short-term rental, right? Because that's not what we do. Um, right now, they're just pulling permits. And we don't know what happens a year from now when the project's done, um unless you know, becomes comes to our attention that they're doing unhosed and short-term rental and they haven't registered yet. Um, but that's what's happening. We're we're not seeing people converting single-family to two-family for this, for this purpose. Um, but we are seeing people from away buying up properties to short-term rent them.
And frankly, uh, people buying abutting properties. This will get us another item on our agenda later.
Exactly.
But but those are all, those are all concerns. And so um, I think, you know, I think that that's that gives us a solid, you know, based on my discussion with the main municipal association's legal staff today. And I did forward that email also, Anita, uh, but just fairly prior to the meeting. So you haven't had a chance to see it. But he did attach some documents from some discussions that they have had and presentations that they have done. Um, but essentially, um, you know, the 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 the, to summarize my discussion with him is, this is a controversial subject. It is feasible or maybe even likely that 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 it is challenged in court. And so to the extent that that we are um, we have the proper authority as a, as a, as a planning board, um, you know, to to uh weigh in on this matter. Um, I I see our authority is coming from both the select board, as Pat, you know, put in number three here. And also um, from the, from the comp plan. Uh, as far as how it often references um housing stock. And there's a whole section on housing stock and and workforce housing and that kind of stuff. So that's the foundation for that. Obviously, safety and 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 and, you know, you know, code, you know, code standards that that falls into our purview as well. So I I just, that's why I think it's important that we nail down a little bit the um, the 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 part of the the ordinance that is the purpose. Go ahead, Pat.
Uh, just one other question. Anita, were you able to speak with Kennebunk or Bar Harbor um, as to how they were doing with their short-term rental ordinances that they got out?
Uh, no, I apologize. I um, I put in a request to speak to, but, you know, none of those people were available. And um, I just wasn't able to uh have a discussion with any of them.
Oh, okay. No, because it just, I had forgotten that a friend of mine works with the different boards in Kennebunk. And I'd asked him a little about short-term rentals. So I am supposed to be seeing them this weekend. So hopefully I could get a little more feedback then, at least from the Kennebunk side of things.
I mean, I, what I can do is uh when they do get back to me and I'll, I'll just, you know, send a couple more reminders. I would certainly um, email the the summary. Um, but um, my time is definitely limited. I leave on Sunday.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
And Pat, you had, you had offered to follow up with others when when time allows, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can always follow up. Sure. Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. So um, you know, the thing, you know, so Anita, if you, if you, instead of you even contacting them again, maybe if since you have the limited time you have, um, just pass the torch on to Pat on the other two.
I'll do that.
And Pat, Pat will start with her Kennebunk exploratory mission, you know, getting some information. And then um, and then, you know, Bar Harbor down the, you know, whenever you apply.
I think what might help, you know, is I did do the, in order to to make those contacts, I did do the research of uh whom to contact according to their town website.
Exactly. Yeah, that would be great.
So I can give her that and the phone numbers and all of that. And that, that was very helpful to have um in this discussion, too, because I could recognize the names and so on.
Yeah. Thank you, Anita, for that effort. Appreciate that. Okay, so I think, you know, unless we, unless we see any other goals or, or what we would like to call the purpose section, does anybody else have any other input on that aspect of it? I think, you know, for the purposes of not to be redundant of the purpose, the, the, the order of them doesn't really matter. Doesn't have to have a primary purpose. We're allowed to have one as a board. But the, the statute is written, the ordinance is written, will probably just list, you know, all of these concerns. And there's no real priority to that. And I think that's important that we remember that.
I would like to see number three completely rephrased, though.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't even be in there. No, I mean, for the, that is more for our discussion.
Yes. But it, you know, I think that's a really good valuable input, you know, and maybe it would be to assure that changes that we make don't further.
Don't, don't just go right into, yeah, I mean, it could be added to the end of, it could be, it could basically, we could rework, work number four and number three together. I think that's something we could definitely do. And I'd, I'd be happy to take a stab at that.
That'd be a good idea.
Okay. And then, so that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which if I recall is the little bit of work that I did and a little bit of help from Jeannie on defining primary residency. Since it, since it seems like our target for these ordinances is primarily going to be the unhosed of short-term rentals that we're, that we're going to be limiting based on prior discussions. The, the, the key to that limitation is whether or not this is somebody's primary residence. And there, as, as Jeannie and I worked out in discussion and there are several ways to show primary residence. And this is where the police power ordinance that we have currently existing has been ineffective. Because it did not identify how, who has, who is a primary resident and, and how many days. There's no way to identify how many days they are renting a property per se. So what we talked about in prior discussions was the homestead exemption being the primary indicator that this is your primary residence. And you can see there that I've just looked at the, the homestead exemption statute for the, for the state of Maine. And I've broken it down into what I hope is fairly non-legalese, you know, language. But basically, for a homestead exemption, you, you must be a permanent resident of Maine. You, the, the home itself must be your permanent residence. And then you see that, that I added a footnote that is all statute. But a permanent resident is an individual who has a true fix and permanent home to which the individual, whatever absent, has the intention of returning. May have only one permanent residence at a time. And once a permanent residence is established, that residence is presumed to continue until circumstances indicate otherwise. That's, that's statutory language. But for our purposes, we're just looking for someone who has, who has applied for and obtained the homestead exemption for this first, you know, bullet point. And in order to do that, you also must have owned a home in Maine for the twelve months prior to applying. This is the one thing with, and then the timing of it, the application must be filed on before April first. This is the one thing where there's a, where we create a little void that someone who purchased a property in May of this year cannot put it into the short-term rental market until the following April, even if they're hosting it and trying to let someone into their, their room. So do we, are we concerned with, shall we address that gap? And also that not everybody claims a homestead exemption even though they're eligible. And I'm not sure of the logic behind that. I, I do see this as a sort of a ancillary positive benefit to our ordinance. If we educate and alert people to the fact that the homestead exemption exists and that they avail themselves of it. I think that's really important. But if someone is not claiming the homestead exemption, and this comes from sort of the, the things that are required to get the homestead exemption, there are other ways to prove that it's your primary residence. And that would be that it's the address you list on your state income tax return. That it is the address that is listed on your driver's license, your hunting license, or your fishing license. Or that you're paying a motor vehicle excise tax in the town of Camden. Or that you are a locally registered voter. All of those categories are criteria that are used to determine whether or not you were eligible for a homestead exemption. Or, you know, that you're eligible for it even if you haven't obtained it. And so that is sort of my general proposal for how we determine primary residency. Because that's going to distinguish how we treat the ones, the, the rentals in the categories that Pat has later identified for us. So are there any comments on this working definition? And it is definitely a working definition. Go ahead, Anita.
So in the second bullet, you're talking about the other types of eligibility. Is that any one of those things qualifies as showing eligibility? Any one of those things? I'm surprised that one, one cannot get a hunting license unless they are a resident of Maine or a fishing license.
Well, it's the address you list on it.
Right.
There's resident licenses and non-resident licenses. And I think the word missing is resident.
So if you have, let's say you, you live in another state and you have your cottage on the lake in Maine, which is extremely common situation. Don't they need to have a fishing license? And wouldn't they use the cottage address as their, as their?
Not if they're claiming, as Jeannie pointed out, it's, it's, and I did leave it off, it's a resident or non-resident license. So if you're living in Mass and you have a cottage on a lake in Maine that you stay in a couple, couple of weeks out of the year, you are not eligible for a Maine resident license. You are a non-resident.
I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not familiar with how the, these.
You have to show your, your driver's license, I believe, to get most of those. And that's going to have your main address, or you're not going to get a resident license.
Anita, we'll, we'll clarify that, make sure that is legit.
It's a good question. And I, I hear you because the last thing I want is to carve a loophole for someone to say, oh, I'm going to come up and put my friend's address on a hunting license and whatever, and then, and then be able to rent out an LLC cottage or whatever.
I, I would be, I'm, I'm just very feeling.
It's, 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 it's a, it's a fair question. I'm adding resident right now to the, to the document because I think that's important. And, and yeah, that's something that Jeremy is absolutely right, that we can sort of iron out and make sure that we have nailed down. But basically, what we're trying to do more than anything is, in the rare situation where someone is is a permanent resident, but they don't have a homestead exemption, I think if they can show either a state income tax return or a driver's license that shows that address, I think that really, those two things primarily handle the issue of residency. Whether you add on hunting and fishing license or the excise tax, but, or let, but the, but voter rule is another one that's pretty significant, right? Because that indicates that you vote as your residence. And there, there, there are rules even against, you know, you know, falsifying or, or using which certain politicians may or may not have run afoul of in North Carolina or some other state. I can't remember which one.
Well, I would agree with the voting rule and the driver's license. I'm skeptical about, about the fishing license and the motor vehicle.
Maybe if we did, maybe if we did driver's license and state ID, because, you know, because we're not, we're not talking about, not everybody has a driver's license.
Right. And I'm also skeptical of the state income tax return because.
This, this list comes from the homestead exemption application that the state has, their form. That's where these come from. That's what they can use. Doesn't mean you have to use it.
Yeah, that's, that's why they were included. And I think that it's good for discussion. And Anita, your discussion is well taken. I do think, I'm not sure about it, but I'm pretty sure that form is signed under penalty of perjury.
It is.
You know, and so, you know, that's the other side of this whole thing is, again, falsifying an application, in my opinion, is, is a death knell for anybody renting in our town. You know, if you, if you can't, if you can't be honest on your application, then, then you can't do business that way. And that, that's, you know, so if, if the, if the enforcement is effective and, and it deserves a deterrent from falsifying information, I think that's going to be helpful. So let's, uh, let's, let's, I don't want to spend too much time on this. Any other thoughts on this, Pat?
Uh, no, not outside of what we discussed right now.
Okay.
I.
I'm, I'm highlighting the, the hunting and fishing license for you on my document, Anita, as a, as a, as a concern.
Okay, Ethan, thank you. I appreciate, I really appreciate you're looking at this and going, what about somebody who arrives in May? And, you know, the, the, this sort of the, the timing issue. I think you're finding a good way to get around that problem for.
Okay, thank you. So then back to our, our loose agenda. Number four is the short-term rental categories that Pat put on her document and Jeremy will share. I'm sure. And again, Pat, thank you again for this because this is super helpful. Uh, we're back to Pat's notes and just below the goals where it says potential types of SDR.
All right, hold on.
Okay. So here we have at the top of Pat's list, I'm, Pat, I am going to let, let you sort of take this over in a minute. But we have potential types of SDR. We have the non-primary year-round home unhosed. Year-round being used to distinguish from seasonal.
Correct.
Yeah. Then you have the seasonal home unhosed, which we as a board have discussed. You know, someone has a lake house on McGonagook and it's only available for three months out of the year. And they come up for two weeks, should they be allowed to put it into the short-term rental market for the rest of that time? And then you have the primary home hosted. I think we've been pretty clear where we stand on that, that people should be free to make additional income on their, on their primary home. You know, the primary, if they want to help pay the bills or whatever else. And then primary home unhosed is when it's your primary residence, but you leave for a certain amount of time and you allow someone to stay in your house without you on the property. So those are the, the basic definitions that summed up in my, you know, my language. The only thing that I would want to add to that, I think, I think I've mentioned a couple of these on my notes. Let me just see. Yeah, I think we have to look at, it will take us into number, item number four A, the, the letter that we received, which will address, and also four B, which is accessory dwellings.
Can I ask?
There's a seven-acre question too.
Well, I'm not a seven-acre fan, to be honest. I don't know how many seven-acre properties there are in the town of Camden. But I don't, I don't, I don't buy into the logic of that one personally. And again, I think that Cape Elizabeth's purpose is more focused on the quality or the lifestyle in the neighborhood and disrupting the, 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 the quietude or whatever. And that's possibly likely because they're a quiet community, but they also are adjacent to Portland. And so it's, it's more likely that they get, you know, more, I don't know, larger groups or something. It just hasn't been something that I've seen a lot here. But again, we, we aren't subject to, we aren't privy to all of the police reports on disruptions and whether they occur at, you know, at short-term rentals. It's definitely a concern, but Camden seems to be pretty sleepy on this front. I haven't heard of any loud, you know, parties happening at Airbnbs. It seems to be much, pretty quiet. But it is something that, you know, just because it hasn't happened, doesn't mean it won't happen.
I think you'd be surprised to learn that there are.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, especially on the lake.
Okay.
Muggles Creek and Hosmer Pond. Yeah, there are party houses.
Okay, that's good to know. Thanks, Jeannie. So the, the question then becomes, you know, as, as Pat detailed, and this is where I'm going to turn it over to Pat. But I, I do what I, as I said, I'm going to add on here accessory dwellings. Because when we passed the accessory dwelling ordinance, we did not intend for those to go into short-term rentals. Right? Just like, and that was a couple of years ago. But that was, that's just like the, the recent ordinances that we passed or that we proposed where, you know, that we were not intending people to, to turn their house into a duplex and then, you know, all turn the other one into a short-term rental. That, that defeats the purpose essentially of our, of our ordinances that we proposed. So I do want to make sure that we consider also accessory dwellings on this list. But Pat, do you want to go ahead and sort of talk us through your questions here? Because I think you asked a lot of good questions.
Um, so you mean like starting with the general limits, for example?
Yeah, and all of these. I think everything, yeah, I think is worthy of discussion.
So that was one of the areas I wasn't entirely sure on because it seemed like for towns, some of the towns that we've looked at today anyway, have differences on what they allow of the different types of short-term categories that we have here or potential categories that we're thinking of. And I didn't know if we wanted to allow for only one of the above per person, like if you're looking at potential types of short-term rentals, do we want to allow for any individual, just one of those? Or did we want to allow for, let's say, one person can have one and two, and then only one for three and four? Or do we just let anybody have all four of the variations?
Yeah, so I mean, primary home hosted, you can only have one. Right? Because you only have one primary residence.
Right.
So, so that, that's, that's kind of its own standalone category. I think it's largely.
Part of the year, it could be a primary home hosted category too, couldn't it?
Oh, you mean, you could have, you could, well, yeah, you could, you could host someone in your home and then have it unhosed it as well. Yep.
You could have someone in, in your, in your granny flat in your home. You could have an ancillary building, a little cottage off to the side.
That's the accessory dwelling that we've talked about as well.
As well. So those are two things that are pretty reasonable to think somebody might want to do.
Um, however, and maybe if we look at the primary home hosted and the primary home unhosed, we might want to add in categories there. I think I did in the primary home unhosed that it must be in the primary residence and not in a separate dwelling on the.
You did add that in there, yeah. Is that from Cape Elizabeth?
Uh, yeah, I think they had that in the Cape Elizabeth ordinance, but I, that would include accessory dwellings in that.
Yeah, that, that would, yeah, that would include that.
And we might want to include, well, I'm thinking primary home hosted, do we want to include something like that also in that category where it's specifically a room in your house versus a accessory dwelling on the property? And I guess if we're looking back to trying to keep freeing up of available rentals for just your average citizen, maybe we would want to include something like that as far as Airbnb short-term rentals go. Because that, let's say they do have an accessory dwelling on their property. Because that, let's say they do have an accessory dwelling on their property. If we're saying it's the primary home, whether it's hosted or unhosed. And we're saying that in either case, we are not allowing a separate dwelling to be inhabited by. A short-term renter. If they do happen to have one of those, that could potentially free it up for a year-round rental.
Right, I think the residence, I think the primary residence requirement. Should apply to accessory dwellings. This is the way I think you handle that. Does that make sense?
There, there's also the number of days, um, per, number of rentals per year. Um, so like in Cape Elizabeth's case, you know, if if you rent out for one day. You know, that's considered a full week. That's, it can be a week or a day, but that takes that week. And they're only X number depending on the type allowed per year. So. Um, basically that type of limitation, although I think it's a puzzle to to figure out the numbers. Uh, besides, of course, forty-two. Um, I think that, you know, basically you're trying to create something where it doesn't really make economic sense to do short-term rentals if. If the limitations are like this.
Right, I mean, it's 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 arguable, right? Because, um. If we go with the forty-two days, six weeks, if somebody's able to get four thousand dollars a week. And I'm not saying that they can, but that the this number may not be completely crazy. Um, that's twenty-four thousand dollars a year. Um, go ahead, Jeremy.
I think there's one right now that I saw in Chestnut Street for twenty-seven hundred dollars a night.
Yeah.
That's Camden Harbor Inn.
Well, that's it.
Yeah, an adjunct.
An adjunct.
Yeah.
You know, we cut, we kind of already have. A primary home hosted category in our homestay.
Right.
And our homestay would not allow a homestay in an accessory building. Has to be in the primary residence. So I don't know if that helps, but. If you're gonna have a homestay, y- y- the accessory building could not be a dwelling unit. It could only be like a bedroom bathroom. It couldn't have a kitchen. That's the current interpretation.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. There's another category here too, is I think we touched on it previously, is that. That Airbnb started where it was like couch surfing, right? There was an entity that was like couch surfing before Airbnb came. And they were just renting rooms. So people lived there and they, I have a basement apartment or a basement bedroom. With a bathroom and they they rented it and they were here, but now it's. That's kind of transitioned to full-on dwelling units. I think the number of dwelling units. It probably ninety, ninety-five percent of Airbnb's are for the whole property.
I agree.
So.
Anytime I use Airbnb, I search for. Individual property. Like, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be in somebody's house. And I know that that's kind of what it was originally designed as. Um, and and Jeremy's right, there is actually an app called Couchsurfing dot com, I believe it's called. Where you can literally go and stay on somebody's couch. Um, and 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 that is, that is something that some people do and and more power to them. Um, but yeah, so I, this is great, Jeannie. Thank you for raising the homestay concern, because I think, um. For sure, we have to square anything we do with the homestay ordinance or else, you know, bring the homestay ordinance. Into compliance with the the short-term rental ordinance or vice versa. So. Um, that's another, uh, area of of focus. So I'm gonna, um, put that. I'm just adding to Pat's document on my own, for my own sake, but, um. I I've written, uh, accessory dwelling is number five and homestay question mark is number six, just to. Make sure that we pay attention to these things. Um.
Another thing to think about is is apartment buildings, condo units. Um, uh. Right now, we say only one homestay per multifamily dwell or complex, whatever.
Well.
So that's to.
Condo's a condo, it's an individual standalone unit.
But if the owner's not there.
Right.
If the owner lives in Florida. I know, cause an apartment, a manager came in from the ones down by the waterfront. They have a resident, uh, manager. Does that count as a host? So if those. Non-resident.
Those are individual dwelling units in my read.
They are, but can they be rented as a hosted?
No.
No.
You have to be, it has to be your primary residence.
Then hosted needs to be de- defined.
That's, that's the whole point.
Yeah.
That's the, again, it's the primary residence aspect of it. It's a dwelling unit. So, um, but you're right, that needs to be included. Um, there's a lot of crossover in all of these discussions, but when we talk about primary hosted. When primary unhosed, that's. Those two are specifically for someone who lives in that property, not in that dwelling unit, not on the, on the lot. In a, in a seven-unit apartment building and and is property manager. That is for someone who lives in the unit itself.
I, I agree. Needs to be defined, um, in the phasiology.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's.
Well, we would, that would be one of my expectations of, is that we would have a list of definitions. Because I think that's important and I think the other ordinances are doing that also, right?
Right. So I'm trying to think where to add that note, because it's where does it fit? Um.
If you're going to adjust the short-term. Um, the rental ordinance now, the unhosed resident, if they have definitions to start, if that's the format. If that's where you're gonna put.
So we're looking at unhosed. The definition has to be, um. I think it's, you know, the definition has to be tied to the individual dwelling unit, if that makes sense. Because the dwelling unit has its own specific definition in the code. So is that a, a, uh, accurate? Um, perspective, Jeremy, or or statement?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's just two ways to look at it. Again, you know. We gotta just line the definition if we're going down the, if we come up with different definitions, if we're going down the unhosed. Amending that lease powers, then they don't have to line necessarily with the zoning ordinance. So, but yeah, that makes sense, Ethan, what you said.
Okay. All right, um, so Pat, how far did we get down your list here?
Not very far.
Right.
Um, well, I guess we're. Still back under general limits for how many. Types of potential, types of short-term rentals do we allow for one individual? Because they could have. A non-primary year-round home, they could have a seasonal home, and then they. Maybe have or don't have a primary home, or they do have a primary.
So what is the, what is your thought? Let's, let's sort of go to the worst-case scenario. Say somebody says, yep, all of those. I'm gonna rent out my house while I live in it. I'm gonna rent out my house when I go on vacation to Italy for two months. I've got a seasonal home on Lake McGonagall that I'm gonna rent out for the summer. And I also own a property in town that I'm never gonna live in. That I rent full-time, or I wanna rent full-time in the short-term rental market. What are the, what are the red flags or concerns with that person? What are the?
Well.
Like if each, if each one of these things has its own, um. Has its own criteria and limits. Is it really, is it, are concerned who is doing what? I'm I'm curious. I ask this simply because I haven't thought it through.
Well, one of the things I'm thinking, Ethan, is if we're looking at the non-primary year-round home unhosed. I know you had talked about the six weeks as being the shortest rental period, but what about? Which I think is something that Cape Elizabeth did, what about just not allowing it?
Well, they did. They they outright banned it unless it was seven acres or more. You're absolutely right.
So what about us saying that those need to be year-round rentals?
Mm-hmm. I mean, it's certainly, uh, with, it's certainly on the table, I think. Um, that's going to require a discussion with, um, the rest of the board. You know, for for their perspective on that. I, I think that, um, not getting back into my terminology that I've been trying to avoid. Um, that's pretty restrictive, and I hear you, and and it may be the only, I think that, you know. I think from a, from a legal challenge perspective. Allowing some short-term rental use. Yet disincentivizing, you know. Is it, is it worth it to rent for six weeks out of the year? And then try to get a tenant in there for ten months out of the year on a, on a month-to-month lease? Versus just putting it into full-time lease, you know? I think that's sort of the question. If we, if we ban it outright, and and Cape Elizabeth has done it, so then they, I don't know that they've been challenged yet on it. That would be another interesting question to find out. Um. It's, it certainly is an option for us to say, if you don't live there, you don't get to rent it.
You know, if one of our, if one of our goals is to simply provide more. Uh, available homes for rent in the community, because, you know, I go back to when I was looking maybe twelve years ago. And I was just really shocked at, there was maybe a handful at the time of year-round rentals. Now, I know that a lot of year-round rentals exist out there that maybe go through word of mouth, et cetera. Which I, sure, I wasn't seeing those, but, you know, it was.
Yeah, there's no rentals out there. You're absolutely right.
Yeah, it made me think, how do people live here if they don't?
They don't. They don't. And they can't even buy right now. If you looked at the housing stock on the, on the, on the real estate market. And there's absolutely nothing. Now, I'm sure there are some. That are, that are just sort of, uh, managed by the real estate companies themselves, you know, that they're like, if you go to. Particular groups, but yeah, there is, that's, that's the critical part of the problem, and it was identified. Um, in the, in the, the comp plan for the past two comp plans is a critical issue. So I am not, I am not objecting to outright banning unhosed short-term rentals. Uh, non-primary.
Another thing is, and I, I don't know how far this gets you or not, but. As I had said, I think under the general thought, this really has to be a community effort. Um, whether that gets people on board or not, I don't know. But it just seems, you know, that it gets to become more and more dire of a situation and nothing is. Uh, we're starting to do things about it, but, um. Uh, you know, it's, it's, efforts from different areas. I don't think there's just gonna be one solution from one source. To try to amend something like this.
Yeah, I I totally agree that this is a, um, this, let's see, it's, it's the opposite of a death by a thousand cuts. But it's, it's, you know, it is, it, we, we try to address it in in as many different ways as possible. And hope that the collective becomes greater than the, than the individual parts, right? The sum is greater than the whole. And that we eventually start to see some trickle into the, into the housing stock of available long-term rentals. So that is a really important question that I think the board needs to grapple with is. Are we comfortable with banning non-primary unhosed short-term rentals?
I think the opposition would be huge.
From. Well, it probably, it probably would be, but.
Yeah.
We have to start somewhere and I don't.
Cape Elizabeth did it.
But I doubt if Cape Elizabeth has the same, um. Restaurant, shopping, kind of center, downtown center that relies on these. Um, summer B and B guests.
So are we, are we, are we to understand, and this would be interesting to 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 raise with the lodging industry. Are they, are, are there no rooms available? Um, in Camden during the summer at the hotels and.
They're basically all full.
Completely full.
Just basically, I think that they run probably seventy-five percent plus. For the good two, three months.
And so, and so, um.
On here for decades and before Airbnb came along and there was, you know. Uh, plenty of tourists all in the past, whether Airbnb was there or not.
I, I'm just saying the opposition might. If you're not letting them rent it all.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I, I think they're all good points. I mean, I just go back to what Ethan said about a, a restaurant owner in town. Um, you know, that was, came before the select board to talk about the proposals that you guys set, put forward before. About addressing housing issues. I mean, he can't find chefs. He can't find people to work in his restaurant. You look at, um. You know, down in Rockland, um, Cafe Miranda's closing.
Yeah, it's all in the news, Cafe Miranda's closing its doors.
They're closing because they, they, part of the reason is they can't find employees, part of the reason, and one, if you read the article, the big issue was housing. Um, so, you know, I, I think you do what is right. Um, and you air it and what you think is right, and you air it out there for the public to comment on. Um, and then, you know, then, then see where things go. Um, I don't think it should necessarily be driven one way or the other. I think you focus on what your issue is, and I think you went through the purpose and the goals. Is really to address the housing availability issue. Um, we're not talking about looking at, I mean, we've already got this, you've already kind of looking, you've already taken a look at the, the camps on the, on McGuntuck Lake, the seasonal. Properties. We, I think we understand that those aren't people's primary residences. And they use them and they rent them, and I think you're gonna facilitate a provision for those seasonal rentals because of the traditional use. Of those camps, and that's how it's always, camps are always been used in Maine. But neighborhoods on Pearl Street and on Hard Knabb and wherever else in town. Those have traditionally been homes, and it's transitioned away from that. Um, in a lot of respects, um, to, you know, the short-term rental piece, so.
Yeah, very well said, Jeremy. I appreciate the, uh, the input. And I think he's absolutely right that, you know, if, you know, if our goal is to, um. Is to increase the housing stock for workforce or whatever we wanna say, just general housing stock. Um. Looking at, um. Looking at the, the, the unhosed, non-primary, and Jeannie may be right, there may be an outcry. At some of these places, there has been, and, you know, in in South Portland, they had an outcry, but then it, and it was forced to go to a referendum. And then when it went to referendum, it passed anyway. And that was in one of the articles that I, that I sent to you all. Um. So I, I would like to, I would like to, uh, say that we, we can discuss this again with the full board present. Um, because I think that's a, a key, a key, uh, decision. That we have to make as a board is how far we're going to go with that portion of it. Um. I, I would say, I, it just occurred to me that, um. When I think about the, the currently existing, um, and I see both your hands, I'm sorry, I will let you in. Um, the currently existing, uh, sort of vacation rentals that we have in town that that existed before Airbnb. Um, I do think about two specific locations. I think about Bayview Street, and I think about C Street. And I don't know if there are others that I'm missing, but those were ones that I think have traditionally had little signs out in front of the houses that say. You know, vacation home rental. Um, and they've been, they've been that way, I think, since before. Airbnb. I, I, I don't know that I've lived in Camden since before Airbnb, and certainly I've not. I, I think I came here, I came down here in two thousand fifteen, so. Um, I'd be interested in your thoughts on possibly considering an exemption for those two areas. Um, or, or any others that maybe would rise up. But, but let's go ahead and get to the, the hands that were raised. So first to Pat and then to Anita.
Oh, um, I was curious, when you keep saying the full board, so Anita's going away for a year and, um, Mark's term is up, I thought Jean said on July first.
Yeah.
So that's me, Crisso and-
And you, yeah.
Andy's, uh, work, I think he's got a heavier travel schedule now or something. It seems like so.
It really comes down to you, me and Crisso being the quorum while Anita's away. And, and, and so, but so Crisso's not here. Um, but if we can get a vote where before everybody leaves, which I don't know if we can, Anita, you're going in a week.
I am leaving on Sunday.
Yeah, so, so the full board will be you, me and Crisso, Pat, until we get somebody else appointed. And that's assuming the select board will reappoint me. I just sent in my notice to, uh, to, uh, Janice to ask her to continue to extend my term and find out what my process is, because my term is apparently up, uh, right now as well.
So Ethan, um, I'm thinking that given that your, uh, timing at this time of day uh, continues, I, I think for the next few months, I could possibly continue to attend on Zoom. I don't know, I don't know how well that works from that, that distance. It's halfway around the world, so I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know how that works technologically.
I, I was on a Zoom with someone from Africa and it did not-
Wasn't a problem.
Yeah, it should, it should be fine as long as the timing works out for you and Anita, and it would be a huge benefit for the continuity of the board to keep you, um, keep you moving on this, on this particular subject.
So I think I could do it. I'd be in Sydney for the, um, the next few months. So I think-
I think it means you have to join at seven o'clock in the morning.
Right.
Oh, she's up early.
No, but-
I don't know if she is or not.
Maybe if you made it six, that would be a lot better. I could join it in. But at least it's not in the middle of the night. So that's a possibility. Um, I, while I've got you, I also wanted to ask you, um, you mentioned one thing and I wasn't able to catch it in time, um, that you wish you could ask Cape Elizabeth. Um, I will be getting a phone call from the actual, um, planner tomorrow, apparently. So, um, if, if you have questions, further questions you'd like me to ask Cape Elizabeth tomorrow, um, let me know what those are.
Well, I guess I, 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 I probably could, could look at it. Um, I can't remember what, what it was that I was referring to. If anybody else remembers, uh, please jump in. Um, I, I think it was, um, whether, whether or not they were using any of the, uh, the outside
firms.
agencies to, firms to, uh, to identify and regulate to some degree the short-term rentals. And if they really don't, if, if, if the, the, I mean, I, I, I know you asked the, the code enforcement officer, but if they only have thirty short-term rentals, I'm having a hard time accepting that fif- fifteen hours a week is required to regulate those thirty. Now, I'm not, I'm not questioning that you asked the question and got that answer. Um, so that, that's not the, that's not the intent here, but I do wonder, um, how that's possible. Because, you know, i- if there's really only thirty short-term rentals in the entire town, you can't imagine that it would be, I mean, I can't imagine spending a half hour a week on each rental even. It seems-
I wonder if you could ask them how many there were before they went to saying no unhosed, because I think that would be an important factor.
It definitely would, and that might be what, what has since whittled it down or, you know.
Okay, and-
Because I think that's absolutely right, Jeannie, that the more people are renting out entire homes than they are. And I would like to know if they've, if they've had any lawsuits.
Yeah, I've got that.
You know, which is, which is a real, a real question, but if we're talking about someone who impose, you know, put, put forth an ordinance and it's been in existence for a little while, uh, that flat-out bans a certain category that we're considering also banning, um, it would be interesting to know if they've had any, what, what the outcry has been. Um, Jeannie's right, Cape Elizabeth is, is a different community insofar as it, um, you know, has less of a sexualized downtown for tourists. Um, you know, but it's still a pretty nice place to stay if you're going to be visiting Portland or the surrounding area. Uh, Pat? Do you have anything?
Uh, nothing right this minute.
Okay.
Oh, as far as the, the planner, uh, no, but I thought that was a good question about the number before the short-term rental ordinance came into play that Jean brought forward.
Nice. Okay. So I'm not sure we got a ton done here, but we are getting a little bit late in the evening. So I want to make sure that we, um, we kind of, we kind of sort of touched on each of these definitions. But what I would suggest is that since not everybody had the opportunity, and like I said, Crisso isn't here, et cetera, that we all take a look at the document that Pat so graciously put together for us and consider her questions and be prepared to discuss them in more detail the next, uh, meeting. Because I think that's where we're at. I think we're going to be, you know, um, I know Crisso mentioned something about not being available the next one, but were we able, Jeannie, to work on a schedule with him? Cause he mentioned some date that he was available.
He's available next week.
How do you guys feel about that? Next Thursday?
Because Pat's not available the, the week after that. Is that correct, Pat?
Um, no, it's not until July twenty-first that I wouldn't be able-
Okay.
Uh, and then August fourth, possibly I could remote in. I'm away that month again in the UK.
So-
I might be able to attend next week, um, depending, uh, because I'm visiting his family.
At five o'clock? Um, or the thirtieth? And I think Crisso was saying the twenty-third. Is that right, Jeannie?
I, I said, I know he said, if you change it to next week, I can make it. I didn't, he didn't say anything about beyond that, I don't think.
Ethan, maybe you and, maybe you and I can work on, um, I mean, it sounds like to me that the, the police powers is kind of probably the avenue that, um, may work best. Do you want me and, like you and I maybe Ethan, to kind of try to draft, um, something based on where we are? Just so we can get at least some language and then we can discuss the finer tune elements, you know, of it um, at the next meeting. So we're not wasting time on purpose anymore or anything else. We kind of just have the outline ready to go in ordinance format?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great idea, um, to get the bare, the bones of it down and, and start to, you know, language it obviously can be reworked. That'd be fantastic. So, um, I'm happy to, to work with you on that, Jeremy.
All right, sounds good.
And to the extent we need to bring in Bill.
Yeah, right, right.
So I, I wouldn't be able to join you next week, I don't think. I'm looking at my calendar. I don't think I can do that.
Okay.
But, um, possible, uh, when I'm in Sydney. And I did want to mention that I, I'm, I am leaning for, towards the banning the unhosed short-term rental as a, um, sort of a clear first step. Uh, yeah, and then we haven't discussed the, the, um, uh, the question that, that gentleman on Belmont had.
Well, I think it does.
I think it's done.
I think it does too. I mean, I, I guess you got, you, you, you saw the letter that he sent. I mean, that would be unhosed.
Yeah.
Well, he's asked, he's asking that we not call that unhosed because he's next door.
Right, but again, I think you need to focus on what your goals are and the goals are what they are. Um, I mean, you-
And that, and that's, that's where the, where the primary sort of, even though they're not prioritized per se, um, that one of our primary goals, let's put it that way, is, um, to keep houses like that from being taken off the, the long-term housing market, whether it's a buyer who's going to be a permanent resident or it's going to be a workforce housing type situation.
And that's what's happening is that, is that proposal is that house is being taken off, uh, taken out of, uh, availability and into short-term rentals.
Yeah.
It's a house on Belmont.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the, the primary concern with that. Um, and, um, the, the house is still free to be put into the long-term market.
Right.
You know, it's not like we're taking away any, any option for monetizing that house and that would more than cover the, the mortgage payment and the taxes on the property. Um, it just doesn't become, it, it, it sounds like, you know, the, the request is personally, you know, from my perspective, is to run a commercial establishment in a, in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and there are Airbnb, there are B and Bs, you know, pretty close by. There's the Belmont Inn right down the road, right, Jeremy? I mean, they are regi-, they are licensed, they are licensed B and B. And if that's something that they want to pursue, they're welcome to it. Um, but I, I do, uh, I do think that that, that goes against the spirit of what we're trying to do. And, um, I understand his perspective that if our only concern is that the quality of the neighborhood not deteriorate, that, that the neighborhood, you know, that we not allow loud parties and that sort of thing, I absolutely appreciate that fact. You have two owners living right next door, um, is going to mitigate that. But if, if our goals are also, you know, to, to keep the character of the neighborhood's residential and to ensure that we have available housing for workforce or anybody else, um, then, then it fails on that front.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
Um,
Um, if you guys are talking next, uh, the twenty-third, that's okay with me for-
Okay. So Anita's not available, but we have her on record. So that's okay. I think the important thing is to get Crisso into this discussion. Um, so I will send him a note, just ask him to watch this meeting. I know he'll be thrilled because he has to not watch Stranger Things or something else. Um, that was a Netflix joke. I don't know where I was going with that. But, um, but, um,
Just let me listen to some music, Ethan.
What?
Just let me listen to some music. I, 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 wow, episode four right now. So just give me my headphones.
I won't do any spoilers. Um, but, uh, yeah, I'll ask him to read. And so Jeannie, is that something we can get on the, on the, uh, calendar in, in a week?
We'll try. It's a workshop. I think we're fine.
Can we, um, discuss, would it be appropriate to discuss as a part of this issue, um, incentives? Are there any incentives we can provide besides disincentives?
Yeah, I think that's a really tricky situation. Um, it's more likely sele-, select board territory if they wanted to do something like that, because you're talking taxes and things like that. Um, I, I don't see how we would do, have a role in that. Um,
Unless we just recommend it to the board to consider the select board.
Yeah, I mean, we can recommend to the board anything we want and, and, and they can choose to accept. I, I don't have, if you have any, it, the, I think the first thing that I would try to do if I were you, if that was something I was interested in, is find out if anybody's doing that and what it actually is, what it could look like and how that would go.
Don't we like to be the first to do stuff?
Well, if you, if you do, that would be great too. Um, but I'm always first, uh, don't reinvent the wheel. So, um, if somebody is doing it, um, it would be good to know what they've tried. Um, I'm sure that there are, you know, people who establish development zones and they have a housing, you know, and that's probably in this new statute that Jeremy referenced, you know, certain criteria that you have to follow and everything else to increase potential housing. Um, I don't think that, I think it's interesting, from what I saw of that statute that Jeremy referenced, um, some of the stuff was actually stuff that we already enacted in this past round, you know, with the smaller lot size and things like that, if I'm not mistaken. Isn't that correct, Jeremy? That's part of the-
Yeah, there, I mean, there, there is that in there. I, I still don't think, we, I don't think we met the bar on this one, though.
No, 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 I don't think we did, but we, we did cover some of the stuff ahead, like before. It's almost like they were listening in. No, I'm just, or we were listening in on them. Um, but so, yeah, so that's, that's part of it. Um, and, and yeah, so I think we've got a pretty clear thing going here. Um, Pat is going to Spearhead, reaching out to Kenabunk, Kenabunk and Bar Harbor. Um, Anita's going to go on vacation and show up, show, but, but, but offering to show up from Sydney is a huge, is a huge thing and it's appreciated. I think it'd be great if we could do it.
Excuse me, I'm sacrificing myself for an entire year to put my house on the market for a year-round rental, just to improve the situation here in Camden. I want you to know that.
Every drop in the bucket helps.
Right.
And you're doing, you're doing, you're doing your part as a citizen and as a planning board member. So look at you. Um, so that's good though.
Giving my friends a place to live.
That's right.
Oh, is there an inside deal here? Yeah.
No, I didn't even, I didn't even know that until, until I ran into them.
So we've got two properties and we're renting them both year-round. Ta-da.
See, not only do as I say, do as I do. So great. Um, all right. Well, thank you both for all of the work that you put on, put in on this. And thank you, Jeremy, as well. And thank you, Jeannie, for your always sage advice. Um, we didn't quite close everything on the, on the agenda, but I think we've covered quite a bit. Um, if, um, uh, based, based on my discussion with, um, the legal counsel for MMA, it really is dangerous territory to have a group discussion on email, um, about these things. So sending, uh, documents is fine, but leave that, leave it to saying, hey, here's some notes I, I have on this that we can talk about at the meeting. Because like in this instance, Pat's notes, we put them up on the screen. These are clearly a public record as of now. Um, and so be, be mindful of that when we're sharing stuff, that anything that you share could be public record and could actually be construed as, as, um, forming an unnoticed public meeting. And so I want to make sure, you know, that we don't venture into those waters. So limit the email to, here's what I got from the MMA, like I did. Or here's proposed agenda for discussion points at tonight's meeting. And then editorial stuff like, I think we should consider the limiting short-term rentals to unh-, you know, unhosed and short-term rentals to zero. Um, that kind of stuff is, is, is best aired in a public forum. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think you also want to ask, oh, sorry, we also want to ask, um, people to, to keep their eyes open, ears, ears and eyes open for, um, planning board members and, and-
Yeah, absolutely. I heard Pat, I heard Pat's been recruiting.
Yeah, I'm not sure how, uh, if that person will actually apply or not, but-
Tell them to watch, tell them to watch this meeting and see what a, what a great time we have.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right.
I, I did ask somebody, um, but that person, uh, was, did not want to serve.
Yeah, so it is, it is a, a good thing that we should be thinking about. Um, I also have some ideas about possible recruits. We should, we should continue that path, um, because it's, it's, I think it's helpful to know that, that in, in many, in, at least for the next year, that Anita might be available because that does reduce our losses by one and that's a significant, uh, reduction. So I appreciate that, Anita. Um, and it is a really important, yeah, and, and it may change. I get it. But it, but it is an important issue that we're dealing with and your perspective is valued.
Thank you.
Um, you know, to the extent that you're able to continue working on this, since we've got the groundwork laid, it would be, be helpful. Um,
Hey, I'm sorry. Um, Ethan, can I just confirm? So documents that I've sent out before, are we thinking that I should just table those until we're having the actual meeting and then, um, bring them forth? Is that a better-
No, what I, I think, I think different, separate than that, I think what I, what I would do, because it's just, you email it out and say, here's some notes I thought we could discuss at the meeting. Um, and then we'll pull the document up and it'd be, it, it just recognize that it will become part of the public record. So if somebody ever did do a Freedom of Access Act, you know, um, request, you may have to produce that document. And so, um, you know, don't put in editorial items in there like, I don't like this guy. You know, things like that, things that are personal or whatever. Um, you know, those sorts of things you want to leave out. But if you're just discussing your thoughts or giving notes about what we should be discussing and asking some discussion questions and we're going to go over those in the meeting, that's absolutely fine. What I mean is in the email itself, the body of the email, um, you also don't want to get into a large discussion in a group. Like if we have all of the planning board members copied on the email, we start discussing something that's on your notes, that is an unnoticed public meeting. And that's what was made clear to me and that's what I'm trying to avoid. So, uh, we haven't had that happen, but the, it's, it, it, if it's you and me, Pat, you can send to me, hey, Ethan, what do you think about this? You and I are actually free to talk, um, separate from the board about a particular issue. Um, but once we get to a quorum, then it becomes a public meeting unnoticed. So if you include Anita on the discussion and the three of us have that conversation, all of a sudden we're kind of more beholden to the rules. And, you know, the, the result of it is not personal liability, but the town, the town can be fined. And, you know, the the result of it is not personal liability, but the town, the town can be fined. $500 or $1,000 if somebody made a complaint about it. And it wouldn't look good, right? It's certainly something we'd rather avoid. So that's my understanding from talking with legal counsel. Um, just trying to get, uh, you know, that's that's the MMA legal counsel, but trying to make sure that we're clear on the rules of engagement. So sending documents around that we're going to discuss at a public meeting is fine. Editorial comments on the document may be part of the public record, so recognize that. And then finally, editorial comments in the email probably shouldn't happen unless it's just you one-on-one with another board member.
Okay, that's good.
That makes sense?
Yeah, it does, and I'm also very glad, Anita, that you're going to be um, be able to communicate with us for a while here. That's great.
Yeah. Totally agree. Okay.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you, everybody, for all of your attention and 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 um, really earnest uh, effort. It's very important uh, and appreciate it. And Jeannie, thanks for keeping me on track.
Yeah.
Have a wonderful trip, Anita.
Yeah, enjoy it. I hear it's a great short flight to Sydney.
Yeah, it's only 15-hour flight.